I need one more for a quorum.
All right, we're ready ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Tuesday, April 4th, 2000. The council meets on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at more or less 10 o'clock, usually less. We are being viewed on Channel 35 and also available by council phone. We have 15 members, 10 of whom have arrived, hence we can begin the meeting. And the first order will be to call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Burnson, Chick, Fear, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miss Caskill, Pacheco, Deere, Willie, Thomas, Wornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present in the quorum,
Thank goodness, just a minute. The first item will be the salute to the flag. And Mrs. Chick, would you like to do that?
I think our college gives very good...
We're going to salute the flag, gentlemen. Go.
Okay, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, and to the republic whose existence one nation, and our power, and physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this being the first Tuesday of the month, we are joined this morning by Reverend Darrell Myers, who is the pastor of St. Mark's Presbyterian Church in Van Nuys, who will lead, who will give us an invocation.
Just a personal word if I may, I am thankful for this time on April the 4th, because as one growing up in South Central LA on an April 4th many years ago, I remember writing on my paper in the 4th grade in Room 16, 4 squared, 4444. And it was in a school on Vernon Avenue, which is 44th Street. So, I say that because I'm one of the dwindling number who have actually seen John Ferraro on the gridiron in his three-point stance. I want you to know he was there. Let us pray. Did you? There's two of us. Good. "O source of life and of hope, we're gathered as persons who care about this city, a city mostly marvel and sometimes mess, but we care and would be its servants. We thank you, Lord, for the marvel of landscape and opportunities, and especially for its beautiful and holy hodgepodge of peoples, and the fantastic varied richness mutually exchanged for our eyes and ears and experience. When there is mess, move us beyond recrimination and all self-serving, toward more fully responsibility and truth and self-giving. May the hands restricted by the deformative mode of finger-pointing be instead opened, indeed extended, across tables and aisles and districts across town, to that greater harmony even unity our city and its people need and you require. For we dare to believe you love the city, this inimitable city, and its amazing aggregate of our humanity. We dare to ponder that you have your heart curved in mercy toward the homeless and the poor, the unemployed and the exploited, the mentally distressed, the bigotry-targeted, and those consigned to the margins of life's pages. And so then, sovereign Lord, stretch us, especially as leaders in LA, to move beyond profit margins and power-broken worldviews, to see this city, and yes, this world with which we are so connected, as primarily human beings, each face, each tongue, each condition internally stamped with your validation, made in the image of God. And so to each of this council, grant imagination and vision, impelled by fresh energy, challenge them, expand them, unify them, bless them, for the health of the city and to your glory. Amen."
Thank you Reverend Myers. I just want, in case anybody is watching this on television, I just want to say again that Reverend Myers is pastor of St. Mark's Presbyterian Church in Van Nuys, not as displayed on the monitor, the Westchester Christian Church. We had him here a couple of weeks ago. All right, first item, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, those are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, those are approved.
Before beginning of the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item 1 has been requested to continue 2 weeks to April 18th.
If there's no objection, we will continue that item 2 weeks.
Item number 13 has also been requested to continue 2 weeks to April 13th, excuse me, April 18th.
Again, without objection, we will continue that item 2 weeks.
Item number 31, Councilmember Wax's office requests that be continued to May 5th.
Without objection, that's continued to May 5th.
And item 36, Councilmember Fear has requested that be continued 1 day to April 5th.
Okay, we'll do that too. Item 36 is continued 1 day. Actually, I don't think we have cards on any of those, so we're not disrupting anybody. All right, we have a couple of presentations here this morning. Mrs. Chick, are you ready to do yours?
No, I'm not.
Not. All right, Mr. Burnson.
Yes, Madam President, members of the council, I'm the messenger today for our emergency preparedness division of the city. And this is Emergency Preparedness Month, where as the city of Los Angeles has experienced 10 presidentially declared disasters in the past 8 years, and the disasters that have struck Los Angeles have caused significant damage to individuals, business, and public facilities alike. Southern California continues to be at risk for damaging earthquakes. The loss of life and property can be greatly reduced if appropriate preparedness mitigation recovery measures are taken before, during, and after a disaster. Whereas April 2000 has been proclaimed by the Governor of California as earthquake preparedness month, during which all Californians are urged to learn and practice earthquake safety precautions and be prepared for all potential hazards. Whereas this year's kickoff event is Tuesday, April 4th at 10:30 a.m., when all Californians are being encouraged to actively participate in the Governor's Office of Emergency Services annual statewide duck cover and hole drill. Whereas the city will host its 9th Annual Emergency Preparations Fair in the north parking lot of the Los Angeles Zoo, Friday, April 14th, Saturday, April 15th, and Sunday, April 16th, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., and encourage all Angelenos to attend this educational event. Whereas the goal of the city of Los Angeles is to enhance its ability to reduce loss of life, property damage, and social and economic disruption caused by earthquakes as well as other disasters, while increasing awareness and commitment among government, business, and the general population. Now therefore, I, Richard Reardon, Mayor of the city of Los Angeles, do hereby proclaim April 2000 as Emergency Preparedness Month in the city of Los Angeles, and hereby encourage all people who live and work in the city to participate in the April 4th duck cover and hole drill, to attend the April 14, 15, and 16th Emergency Preparedness Fair, and to make personal commitment to take appropriate actions to prepare and protect themselves and others from the effects of earthquake and other disasters. Now, let me just add a little footnote to this. Los Angeles, short, less than 5 years ago, well, actually, it's been 5 years, 6 years, excuse me, but who's counting, right? Experienced one of the most devastating disasters to hit any major city in the world. And it was only through the work of the city departments and the Emergency Disaster Preparedness Division that we endured this with a minimal loss of life compared to the extent of the tragedy. The population had been educated to some large degree through a lot of efforts by the city. They knew how to turn off their gas, thank goodness, because 17,000 leaks were discovered when the gas valves were turned back on. The fire department will tell you that the city probably would have burned, certainly the valley, had we not had that education. So it's an ongoing, and we also enacted legislation strengthening some of our buildings, which would have certainly collapsed, some 7,000 of the URM's. We still have a great need to move forward. I've been trying to push some of these ordinances, maybe, maybe you as a council will listen, and enact some of these requirements for strengthening some of these very unsafe buildings that still exist. But it's important that we do these things, and I want to personally commend the people in the city who have been responsible for this program of public enlightenment and our efforts in making the city prepared to do its job. And they certainly did it 6 years ago, and they are prepared to do it again, God forbid, if we have to. Thank you.
Would you like to say a word here?
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the council, I just would like to encourage all of you to join us at the zoo parking lot next weekend, the 14th, 15th, and 16th. The Emergency Preparedness Fair that our city sponsors is the single largest emergency event like this in the entire country. The state of California recognizes our event as the most significant event taking place for the public during the month of April, and California is a leader nationally in this type of preparedness, and it gives us an opportunity, as a councilman said, to try to get people to focus on the need to prepare. We could have another earthquake like Northridge at any moment, and we need to constantly remind ourselves to be ready for that. Thank you.
I just want to add one more thing, and that is that Marguerite Klein, wherever you are, you're probably responsible for the city's preparedness.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. All right, next item. business, and public facilities alike. Southern California continues to be at risk for damaging earthquakes. The loss of life and property can be greatly reduced if appropriate preparedness mitigation recovery measures are taken before, during, and after a disaster. Whereas April 2000 has been proclaimed by the governor of California as earthquake preparedness month, during which all Californians are urged to learn and practice earthquake safety precautions and be prepared for all potential hazards. Whereas this year's kickoff event is Tuesday, April 4th, at 10:30 a.m., when all Californians are being encouraged to actively participate in the governor's Office of Emergency Services annual statewide duck, cover, and hole drill. Whereas the city will host its ninth annual Emergency Preparations Fair in the north parking lot of the Los Angeles Zoo, Friday, April 14th, Saturday, April 15th, and Sunday, April 16th, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., and encourage all Angelinos to attend this educational event. Whereas the goal of the city of Los Angeles is to enhance its ability to reduce loss of life, property damage, and social and economic disruption caused by earthquakes as well as other disasters, while increasing awareness and commitment among government, business, and the general population. Now therefore, I, Richard Reardon, mayor of the city of Los Angeles, do hereby proclaim April 2000 as Emergency Preparedness Month in the city of Los Angeles and do hereby encourage all people who live and work in the city to participate in the April 4th duck, cover, and hole drill, to attend the April 14th, 15th, and 16th Emergency Preparedness Fair, and to make personal commitment to take appropriate actions to prepare and protect themselves and others from the effects of earthquake and other disasters. Now, let me just add a little footnote to this. Los Angeles, short, less than five years ago, well, actually, it's been five years, six years, excuse me. But who's counting, right? Experienced one of the most devastating disasters to hit any major city in the world. And it was only through the work of the city departments and the Emergency Disaster Preparedness Division that we endured this with a minimal loss of life compared to the extent of the tragedy. The population had been educated to some large degree through a lot of efforts by the city. They knew how to turn off their gas, thank goodness, because 17,000 leaks were discovered when the gas valves were turned back on. The fire department will tell you that the city probably would have burned, certainly the valley, had we not had that education. So it's an ongoing, and we also enacted legislation strengthening some of our buildings, which would have certainly collapsed, some 7,000 of the URM's. We still have a great need to move forward. I've been trying to push some of these ordinances. Maybe you as a council will listen and enact some of these requirements for strengthening some of these very unsafe buildings that still exist. But it's important that we do these things, and I want to personally commend the people in the city who have been responsible for this program of public enlightenment and our efforts in making the city prepared to do its job. And they certainly did it six years ago, and they are prepared to do it again, God forbid, if we have to. Thank you.
Would you like to say a word here?
Madam President, members of the council, I just would like to encourage all of you to join us at the zoo parking lot next weekend, the 14th, 15th, and 16th. The Emergency Preparedness Fair that our city sponsors is the single largest emergency event like this in the entire country. The state of California recognizes our event as the most significant event taking place for the public during the month of April. And California is a leader nationally in this type of preparedness, and it gives us an opportunity, as a councilman said, to try to get people to focus on the need to prepare. We could have another earthquake like Northridge at any moment, and we need to constantly remind ourselves to be ready for that. Thank you.
I just want to add one more thing, and that is that, Marguerite Klein, wherever you are, you're probably responsible for the city's preparedness.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. All right, next item.
Madam President, there are two additional items to continue. Item number 10 has been requested to continue one day to April 5th.
All right, without objection, continue item 10.
And the city attorney has advised that item number 35, the closed session, can be continued to April 12th.
Splendid. Item number 35 is continued to April 12th. Yeah, see how much of the meeting we've already taken care of? Okay, next item.
Items, notice for public hearing. Item number two is a required public hearing item.
We have no cards on item two, so we'll open the public hearing and close the public hearing. And the item is now before us. Do I hear a motion? Do I see anybody wishing to speak? Mr. Savornich moves approval. Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you, that is approved. All right, next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items three through 11.
All right, items three through 11 before us. Are there any specials, members of the council? Seeing none, item 11, we need a motion. Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll move the Public Safety Committee's most recent report that strikes the acreage requirements. And I'd just ask for your unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Items three through 11. Item 11 being the new public safety report. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 12 through 13, need 10 votes to consider.
Is there any objection to considering those items, Mr. Holden not being present? Seeing none, they are before us. Any specials? Items number 15, Mr. Burnson calls special. Anybody else? Mr. Savornich requests that item 30 be referred to the Planning and Land Use Committee. Is there any objection to that? 30. Okay, thank you. Item 30 will be referred to the Plum Committee. Okay, what numbers were we up to?
12 through 34, with the exception of 13, which has already been acted on. 30 referred to Plum, and 31 has already been acted on also.
We have cards from the public on items 29 and 32, which are related items, so we'll call those special and act on the others. Anybody in the council wish to be heard on items 12 through 30? My, whatever it was.
34.
34, with the exception of 15, 29, and 32, and the others that have been removed from the agenda. Seeing, what about 18? All right, Hal has called item 18 special. All right, open the roll on the others. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. See, this is wonderful. Next item.
Item 15 called special by Councilmember Burnson.
Mr. Burnson, could you push the speaker button while you're at it?
I'd just like to ask, have a staff report, an explanation of why, what are we doing here? Were we receiving the $1.1 million repayment? Are we receiving the?
He's coming, he's coming. Hold on.
Yes, good morning. Don Spivak from the Community Redevelopment Agency. The item before you is to receive $1.1 million in repayments as part of a refinance of bonds that were previously issued on this particular project. There has been partial paydown. Under the original agreement, there was a loan guarantee that was extended to the developer. This is being repaid, the $1 million loan plus $100,000 worth of interest. So it is a repayment. They're otherwise refinancing the project to extend the term.
Fine, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? In that case, open the roll on item 15, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Unanimously approved. Fourth with, we'd like to receive money right away. Next item, I believe.
Item number 18 called special by Councilmember Burnson.
Mr. Burnson.
Let me ask, where's Mr. Deaton?
Well, he's.
What impact does this, what does this bill do? When you say governs local agency boundaries, can somebody explain that to me, please?
Well, Mr. Deaton was here a moment ago.
Mr. President, if I could just mention what happened. This had been on the agenda last week. It was recommended as an approval for the bill, the Hertzberg bill, by Mr. IGR, Mr. Holden. Mr. Hertzberg has introduced it. This apparently has not, does not focus on our LAFCO situation. What it was, it was a state working group that came together on making an overall update on LAFCOs and uniformity throughout the state. It's 100 and some pages long as a bill, but Mr. Deaton.
I think we need to know, what does this do, Ron? How does this affect current LAFCO in Los Angeles County? And what does it do?
Membership, not at all. It's exempted. It talks about LAFCO membership in other parts of the state. It actually, Assemblyman Hertzberg, this was a outgrowth of the reorganization bill that does affect us, but it was a statewide commission that was headed by Mayor Golding from San Diego and other people. And it has, and we've been following that for a long time, but the impact on, actually on San Fernando Valley slash anything that's going on LAFCO, membership-wise.
I'm not just concerned with San Fernando Valley. I want to know what it does to the LAFCO.
It doesn't, it doesn't change the membership.
Doesn't change the membership?
No.
Doesn't require elected public members, or what?
No. It exempts, the L.A. and one other one, it exempts total, as I recall.
Does it have a population exemption or something, or what?
No, I think it's named.
It's named?
Yeah, Mr. Karsh?
The reason I'm concerned is it's taken the city many, many years before we even had representation in LAFCO. At one time, was totally dominated by the county. And legislation which we succeeded in getting carried about 15, 16, 17 years ago increased the size of Los Angeles LAFCO to give a council member on there, plus a member from the valley. Tell me, what does this do?
Almost all the major areas, San Diego, Los Angeles, San Jose are exempted for any change in membership.
So in other words, they're adding membership where they only have five members.
Exactly. Where, there are many major areas. This has been one of them, San Diego's another, San Jose area is another one, Santa Clara, that in fact have over a long period of time added LAFCO members for a variety of reasons. They are different than any other LAFCO in the state. Those have been exempted because of the history of those, and ours is one of those, and we're not, it's not changing.
Okay, fine. If that be the case, I have no objection, and I would.
There's something about somebody in the 12th district can't serve.
Yes, I want to know what happened to that amendment, Mr. Deaton, about the representative.
Mr. Ridley Thomas, hold on, there's three people ahead of you.
Well, tell me about that amendment for Burnson.
I'm in for life, Mike, so you, you know, it's too late.
All right, Ms. Misakowski.
Essentially, I just wanted to present what Mr. Deaton has to say that we are recommending support of the bill with concern about future amendments, so that as it passes out of the state assembly and goes to the state senate, we will be looking and monitoring it to make sure that there's no impact that's negative on the city's processes as we notice LAFCO goes forward. But it is, as they say, a very significant bill overall, and we need to be monitoring all of its details. And there is a working group that has been formed of council and CLA, with the mayor's office as well, to be monitoring this. And we will be looking at its future activity as it moves forward to the state senate side.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
I just wanted to add that at the Community and Economic Development Committee of the State League of Cities, there was prior discussion in regards to this legislation because of the impact it has on small towns and the relationships of county, as well as the funding of LAFCOs. And I basically asked the question, how does it impact Los Angeles? And the reality is that we, as a LAFCO, are exempt from the legislation and are not part of it. I think that, again, the recommendations that have come through the committee that was established for purposes of review have had a lot of give and take, and the state league at this time is supporting it. At least the committee took a vote in that direction. But Los Angeles as an entity and the LAFCO that oversees us is not part necessarily of this legislation.
Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I notice in the communication from the chair to the council that one of the recommendations, it mentions that two recommendations that are contained within AB 2838 are harmful to the city of Los Angeles. It says, "In an effort to simplify the LAFCO process, the commission recommended that the option for cities to unilaterally terminate detachment proceedings be eliminated. They replace the ability to terminate unwanted detachments with an instruction that LAFCOs consider a city's concerns with great weight, which carries no weight of law. AB 2838 should be amended, preserve this city right." So is what it is that is saying that currently, AB 2838 says that the veto provision of a city in regards to detachment proceedings be preserved or be removed. And so the city of Los Angeles, Mr. Burnson? Mr. Burnson, you'll probably want to hear this. So the issue is, is that the city of Los Angeles is supporting the bill only in that the bill be amended to preserve the city of Los Angeles's right to stop detachment proceedings with its veto authority. Is that correct?
Yes.
Then I would suggest that I cannot support this, even though I do support the ethics provisions of this bill. I think we should bifurcate the issue in regards to what portions of AB 2838 we support versus the ones that we don't. This council member supports the disclosure portions and the reporting requirements. This council member does not support unilateral positions of the city of Los Angeles to be able to veto any detachment proceedings by any portion.
This does not, no, this does not affect the special reorganization law that allows the two reorganizations that are currently being considered by LAFCO and other people in the city are considering.
It doesn't say that.
These are, well, but it doesn't. What I'm saying is that there are small detachments that never get to the magnitude of a election and the whole process that we're going through in the San Fernando Valley and in the Harbor area, that there are small detachments, and this would eliminate that process. And everything would have to go to an election.
I understand that, but it doesn't say that when the, within the context of the bill, does it?
Yes.
It does say it?
Right.
So it says this bill does not.
It does not impact the special reorganization part of the law. This is just detachments. This is not reorganizations.
Okay, so it does not, the bill contains protections for the current effort that is underway both in the San Fernando Valley and in the Harbor area.
And those are grandfathered, number one, and also any future ones like that are also carved out. It's just detachments of, it's not, I'm not trying to, and the chair's, the chair's communication is not trying to circumvent that particular piece of legislation by this. This is, and remember that the author of this, I mean, it's just not, that's not the intent. And that would not be the impact.
I think my time is up. I'll push my button again.
I think your time is up, yes. Mrs. Chick.
Well, Mr. Savornich posed the same question that I was interested in. So, Mr. Deaton, you are saying that the amendment that's before us to this bill does not make sacred, for instance, the city of L.A.'s right to completely nullify an attempt for breakoff? Because we went through that here on this particular case that's before LAFCO and worked very hard to remove a veto by the council. I don't want to open up that process again.
Two things. One is, oh, three things. First off, I'm not sure state law can make cities' things sacred in the first place. But secondly, it does, this does not change the position of the special reorganization under which both the Harbor area and currently the San Fernando Valley areas are considering reorganizations.
What about future?
Three, the city's position during that entire debate, both in the original bill that did not pass, and finally, the Hertzberg McLintock bill that did pass, was the city never advocated the veto by the council.
Right, but it's fair.
The city's position had, is, from the very, from the get-go.
But isn't this amendment putting that back?
No. This is for small detachments. The city's position is exactly what the law is today, is that there would be an election of both the area that wants to secede and the area, the rest of the city, of the entire city, and that there'd be a financial review done. Our position on that has been the same throughout this process. This is not in conflict with city policy. And we have never, the city of Los Angeles has not taken a position in recent history of requesting to keep the veto. That has never been the position.
Has there been communication with, I forget what his, soon-to-be Speaker of the Assembly, Hertzberg, about our amendments and our changing?
Yes.
And he's fine with them, thank you. Mr. Wax.
I think the discussion's been helpful, and I just would like to make sure that in writing, we just, we put this in our committee report and our instructions, this clarification, so that there'll be no question later on. So I'm also understanding now that secession is actually now called reorganization.
Or vice versa.
Special reorganization, under the state law.
Right.
And wasn't it the request of some of the organizations that we now begin to refer to it as such? I think that came up in our committee, didn't it? And we approved that. Has that been approved by the council?
No, it has not.
It should be coming soon, because I remember we discussed that, Councilwoman Misakowski, in our committee. And for future, that we will be using that term, even though the commonly-used term in the public.
Well, the difference, Mr. Wax, of using that term, which when it comes to council, I'll be happy to point out again, is the fact nobody understands that.
I know, but the problem is that if state law refers to one thing and common usage is another, we could, we don't want to get ourselves in a situation whereby using common usage, we make a mistake because we didn't take into account a different definition in state law. So perhaps we'll always have to make clear, you know, special reorganization parenthesis, secession.
Or vice versa.
No, no or vice versa.
Mr. Fewer. Mr. Burnson for the second time.
I think we've got it cleared up, but I would like to, do you have a, do you have the language of the amendment in front of you? I'd like to hear the amendment read, I think some of the other members, just so we're sure we're talking about the same thing. Because I don't know what the difference between a detachment and a reorganization is. I think I know the difference, but that's why I want to make sure we're not amending something that.
Prior to the Paula Boland and Tom McLintock legislation, dealing with, that created special reorganizations, the only way was to detach and then to form a new city. It was so rarely done that there was no provision in state law to do it all in one step. That's what the Boland and the, it wasn't Strickland, McLintock legislation did do.
But that was not passed, was it?
That was, yes, Paula Boland's was not, but the subsequent one was.
The subsequent one with Bob McQuinckley was passed.
Where we, yes, that's right. Hertzberg and McLintock.
So tell me what the difference is now. This, are we, you're saying that they would, it says that these, that they would have the, have the cities would have the ability to veto detachments.
Yes, which is what we have now.
That's a small area. For example, if you want to detach an area of Los Angeles and add it to another city, it's not a major reorganization in which you're creating a new city.
So it's detachment for the purpose of going to another city already in existence?
Or to the county.
Or to the county. In other words, just to leave? Well, that's what, that's what, that's what, basically what would happen if the valley, for example, or the harbor detached and said they didn't want to form a city, they would just be part of the county. Is that correct?
That, that would be part of that overall reorganization. They would be reorganized and then in fact, they would say either one of two things. One is they wanted to become part of it, they wanted to become a new city, or form, or join another city, or join the county.
So if it's a reorganization, it would not be subject to veto, is that correct?
That's right. It's subject to all the rules that are put forth. It has to do with, as, as we're going through right now-
Yeah, I want to be very clear on this because we're going to have to, I'm going to have to deal with this on LAFCO, number one, representing the city. And number two, there's a lot of areas of the city that are going to be looking at this and I want to be concise on what our, what, what it actually is doing.
Our position has been the same.
Well, I know what the city's position is as far as a city position. I want to make sure that the position that this bill creates is one of equity and we understand what it is.
The city's position and this, this amendment are, are consistent and inconsistent with the Hertzberg McLintock bill, which we supported.
Did I? Did I support that?
No, you didn't. I don't know whether you did, but the city of Los Angeles did.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Zivornich for the second time.
Well, that clears a lot of things up. So the difference between a detachment and a special reorganization, for the purposes of what is contained within this bill and whether or not the city of Los Angeles wants to support the bill, is that the detachment is that a portion of land, which is currently part of a city, can leave that city, but yet, something has to be done with it. It either joins another city or it becomes part of the county. It just can't stay in limbo and leave and reorganize itself as a city by just detaching. Is that correct?
That's right. And that if they were going to form their, a new city, or in some fashion, then they have to go under the other part of the law, which is the reorganization, which requires the elections and the petitions and the, and the election of both. For example, if it was five homes that wanted to detach, and it was in everybody's best interest, we believe that it should go through the normal process of being approved by both elected bodies and the LAFCO process, as opposed to having elections.
Okay. So what is the prop, what is the process right now, just real quick, because the clock is running? What is the, what is the difference between a process to detach versus a process to reorganize?
What is the difference in the process?
For the purposes of this bill.
In the, in the case of the reorganization, which is another section of the law, it requires that twenty-five, at my recollection, and I have to look at the numbers, 25% of the people sign a petition at the end of that process and a financial analysis, and at the end of that process, then 50% of the people in that area and 50% of the remaining part of the city has to agree to it. And you're forming a new city.
Okay, so then what's the difference between that and, and special reorganization?
There have been, there has, some time ago, there was a detachment of a small number of homes to another city, removing, because of proximity of, the, just the area-
I, I did that one, so maybe I can just fill, if you don't mind, I'll actually turn off the timer and just answer the question. This was a section, it was a new development on the edge, the border of Los Angeles and Culver City. And part of it was commercial and part of it was residential and because of the geography, there's a hill in there, it made more sense to have the residential access come from Culver City and the commercial access come from Los Angeles. And in order to accomplish that efficiently, the two cities agreed that the residential portion, which had been in the city of Los Angeles, would become a part of Culver City. And that was done as the development was being constructed, by consent of both cities.
It's little spot areas, for example, that have been, not, ones that we haven't agreed to, and I won't go into the specifics, but in which another city would like to have a particular commercial area that has a lot of, a lot of sales tax.
Okay.
And we didn't think that was appropriate.
So I, I guess the final question, as my time expires, is, is that, does the support of this bill, even as requested by the committee chair that it be amended, and the city is only recommending that we, the chair is only recommending that we support this bill if it is amended, does that in any way, shape, or form harm now or in the future, any process by which either the San Fernando Valley or the Harbor area could continue to proceed with their special reorganization?
No, and, and for that matter, any other area of the city that would like to do, do the same.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez.
I support everybody succeeding LA except my district.
Is that it? Or can we follow?
Madam Chair, members of the council, again, and maybe Mr. Cars can answer some of these questions. Part of this legislation is dealing with the restructuring of how you finance LAFCO. And some of the municipalities are now going to be contributing towards that financing so that they can gain that, their, their vote at the table. Is that part of Los Angeles currently?
No, that doesn't affect us. So in fact, we already contribute significantly to LAFCO.
Right, okay.
That's about 20%.
And when Mr. Hertzberg formed this LAFCO review committee and appointed the San Diego mayor chair, who from Los Angeles sits on that committee?
Oh, on the Hertzberg Commission?
Yeah, on the Hertzberg Commission.
We, we participate in it.
I don't recall. We monitored the proceedings.
Now, the reason is, I was asking the same kinds of questions my colleagues were asking at the State League meeting, and the State League looked at me kind of funny. And the reason they were looking at me funny was, Los Angeles is not part of this legislation. We've pretty much created a LAFCO, and I think there's another major city or two, San Francisco, I think, San Diego's not part of it, San Jose, who basically their LAFCOs are not part of this legislation. And I just wanted people to kind of understand that because the rest of the state thinks that what's going on here is strange. They're, they're fighting to become bigger and, and get more land and everything else, and they don't really understand, and their battles are between the county and them. It's not necessarily between, inside the boundaries of the city. And so, they are basically going through a lot of compromise. So they're looking at this legislation as something that they have an opportunity to kind of mold and put together in terms of how it impacts their boundaries and that sharing of, of decision-making. But in our case, it doesn't impact us whatsoever, and I just wanted people to understand that. I, I think one reason we would want to be supportive of, of Assemblyman Hertzberg is because of his support for the city of Los Angeles and the fact that he wanted to make sure Los Angeles wasn't impacted by this commission's decisions at this time.
Okay, thank you. There being no other speakers, the matter is before us. Open the, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
How about that? Unanimous vote. Thank you. That is approved. Next item.
Item number 29, a member of the public wishes to speak.
Item number 29, Mr. Rick Best. Pay close attention to this man.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter and council members. My name is Rick Best and I'm the Policy Director for Californians Against Waste, and I'm also the Chairperson of the Grassroots Recycling Network. And I want to begin by applauding the city's efforts in terms of recycling. This year is the year, the state's goal for meeting the state's 50% diversion requirement, and my understanding is that the city's currently at about a 50, excuse me, a 47% diversion rate as of last year, and I think is well on the way to meeting the state's 50% goal. And I think the city certainly should take a lot of credit for being a leader within California in implementing recycling programs. But I'm here today to talk briefly about the importance of, of market development and want to applaud Councilmember Galanter for introducing this resolution. Using recycled materials and making new products is really critical to helping close the recycling loop. And the fact is, many of the products that we buy these days, aluminum cans contain 70% recycled material, glass bottles contain over 35% recycled materials. We're clearly creating the markets for those products that we're recycling, but plastics is the one area where we haven't done that. We've seen plastics recycling rates plummet over the last two years, and the fact is, less than 1% of the food containers that are sold in grocery store shelves currently have any recycled materials. So that's something that we really need to change. And under the leadership of, of Councilmember Galander last year, the city adopted a resolution targeting Miller. Miller, last year, introduced a plastic beer bottle that at the time didn't contain any recycled content. As a result of the city's resolution, Miller has now committed publicly to using as much recycled content as possible as it rolls out its plastic beer bottle on a national basis. So clearly, local governments like City of LA can make a tremendous impact in helping craft the directions of companies. And the, the next company, though, that I think needs to be addressed, is Coca-Cola. Coca-Cola is certainly the industry's leader in terms of producing beverage containers. They produce 43% of the market share, and yet, until this last year, they weren't using any recycled plastic. They're currently using a very small amount, according to industry sources. It's less than 1%. We want to see Coca-Cola use much more than that. So we believe that the motion that's before the city council today, by requiring the city to review its vending contracts to ensure that beverage containers that are sold in city offices and departments contain recycled material, including recycled plastic, is an appropriate policy step, and we would strongly urge your support of the, of the motion.
That closes the public hearing on item 29, and as long as you're there, let's do the public hearing on item 32, and then we'll take up both of them here.
Okay. I won't introduce myself again, but specifically on the issue of Coca-Cola and the, and the resolution that's before the city council today. Back in 1990, Coca-Cola Company made a public commitment to use recycled content in its plastic soda bottles. It did for a couple of years, from 91 to 94, but then stopped doing so. And during that, since that time, we've seen, as I mentioned before, plastics recycling rates drop from a high of 53% in 1994 to just 35% in 1997, the last data that's available. So clearly, there's an impact in terms of the, the drop in, in plastics soda bottle recycling rates, and the failure of Coca-Cola to fill, fulfill its pledge to use recycled content is, is certainly a key cause for that concern. So the, the motion that's, excuse me, the resolution that's before the city council today does a couple of things. One, it helps, or it urges Coca-Cola to fulfill its responsibility to use recycled plastic in making its soda bottles, but also it urges Coca-Cola to support increased collection efforts. As Coke begins to use recycled content, we need to make sure that there's more plastic bottles out there available to be recycled. California has been a leader in terms of its bottle bill program, and that certainly provides a lot of the funding for local, the city's recycling programs, but unfortunately, in many other states, there aren't bottle bill programs, and Coca-Cola has vigorously opposed those. So we believe this is an appropriate resolution to help drive the markets for recycled plastic and to help support collection efforts, and we would urge your support.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing on item 32, and I'd like to thank Mr. Best for his tremendous assistance in preparing these resolutions, and I'd like to thank Mr. Ridley Thomas for his cosponsorship of same. And open the roll. On 29 and 32, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are both approved. Thank you very much. Fourth with on those, please. And we'll now take a break and recognize Mrs. Chick for her presentation. Colleagues, good news. Mr. Ridley Thomas, I love that over there. But we don't have enough good news out there, and too often, we are hearing about people's apathy, their fears, their unwillingness to get involved. And today, we have an opportunity to acknowledge some very special people who did get involved and got involved, really risking their own safety and their own well-being. On the night of the Academy Awards, while most of us and the city and the world were celebrating the adventure of make-believe, the three men I'm about to honor were living it real life. The individuals we are honoring today are no strangers to heroism. Each has demonstrated in the past his willingness to risk his life and limb to help someone else. These are real, true-life heroes. Larry Welk, if you'd step forward, please. Larry is from KCAL 9, and he has been a professional aviator in Los Angeles for eight years. He's been with KCAL since 1996. During the '92 floods, Larry rescued a stranded motorist from the Sepulveda Flood Basin and was honored by us here in city council and by the Los Angeles Press Club. So this is a familiar spot for you, Larry. And luckily, he was on the ground when his colleagues needed him. On behalf of the city council, City of Los Angeles, Larry, I want to say thank you very, very much. I hope we don't have to have you here again. You keep doing these brave things, but thank you for each and everyone.
Thank you very much.
And Aaron Fitzgerald from KCBS, who has been with CBS Two News since 1994. He's a former paratrooper in the famed 82nd Airborne Division, so I guess bravery is in his bloodstream. In his daily patrols by air, Fitzgerald has covered everything from shootouts, floods, and fires to police pursuits. But on the night of March 26, he wasn't covering news, he was making news with his bravery and his quick thinking. And also, Aaron, we commend you, the city council and the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask them if they want to say a few words in a moment, but last but not least, colleagues, someone from our own city family, Carl Sandsberry. He is someone people haven't heard much about yet. Officer Carl Sandsberry has been a member of the Los Angeles World Airport Police Department since 1982, and during that time, he has received several commendations for his service to the people of our city. I found out that Officer Sandsberry was on the scene because he likes to work at night and the weekend shifts. It just shows you that you can find the best in Los Angeles on the job 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Officer Sandsberry, I want you to know how proud we are of you and to say thank you on behalf of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
And colleagues, now I'd like to ask if any of our three heroes would like to say a few words and perhaps introduce some of the people that are here with them. Yes?
First, thank you for having me here. It is a great honor. I'd like to point out the support of my, my, two of the guys that I work for, Roger Bell, my news director, and Fernando Lopez, my assistant news director, and my fiancee, Melanie Mandels, who are all here to support me today. Thank you for that. And I'd just also like to say that the helicopter crews that are flying over the city every day and every night are usually on duty with the knowledge that they're going to have to perform a rescue of some time, of some kind, at any point in their career, whether it be a downed aircraft or a flood, in Larry's other rescue, or in any kind of a rescue. That's, helicopter has historically been a tool of rescue, and we were happy to be the crew on duty that night, and I hope we never have to do it again. Thank you.
Yeah, I hope you never have to do it again, too.
Thank you.
Larry?
Thank you very much. I'm extremely honored by this and appreciate it. And I, too, wanted to express my thanks to the folks that I work for, General Manager Don Corsini, Dennis Herzog, and Hugo Rossiter are here from KCAL, and, and it's their support that I was able to get that helicopter out there that night, and we were able to effect that rescue, and I'm honored to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's an honor to have you, Officer Sandsberry. And by the way, colleagues, the county of Los Angeles has also just honored these three gentlemen for their bravery.
Thank you. It was an interesting night, to say the least, and I want to say that there were many people out there that night that go unsung here tonight. There were City of Los Angeles Fire Department, LAPD was at our disposal. Maintenance people came in to create ground, contaminated groundwater from going into the sewer system. There were a lot of city workers out there. There were a lot of workers for the tenants, the helicopter crews, everybody out there pitched in, and everybody did one heck of a great job out there that night. And it's nice to be recognized here, but there are many, many others that go unrecognized that should at least have their moment of glory also. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a true hero that gives credit to someone else. Thank you, colleagues, very much. Thank you, Mrs. Chick, and thank you to all of you for your efforts, and I, too, hope you never have to do it again. Okay, the next item. I think that completes our regular agenda.
Yes, do you wish to recess to go into the special meeting?
We will recess the regular meeting. We have a special meeting, and we'll call the special meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Bernson, Chick, Fewer, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Bedear, Ridley, Thomas, Zivornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 11 members present in the quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. The first and only item on the agenda.
Item for which public hearing has been held, communication from the CDD regarding approval for a position authority, CNED committee report to be submitted.
Do we have the committee report?
Yes, Madam President. I believe it's been circulated.
All right. All right. There has already been a public hearing on this item, so the matter is before us. Do any of the council members wish to speak? Seeing none, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is unanimously approved. We'll better do fourth with on that one as well. And we can now, that adjourn, we can now adjourn the special meeting, can we not? And we will resume the regular meeting, and I believe the only item left is public comment.
Yes, Madam President.
Oh, certainly. Twenty, say again, 20, 23, and 24, fourth with. Yes, wasn't it? Mr. Holden's not- Mr. Holden's not here. I'm sure you all noticed that. All right, we're back in the regular meeting, and this is the time for comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Mr. Robinson.
Madam President, members of council, I'm writing a book. It is the fictionalized story about my life. Ruth, the psychological treatment of politics at City Hall should be of interest to you vis-à-vis Jung's subconscious collective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. That completes the public comment period. Do we have any adjourning motion? Oh, no, we have other things, yes. What else do we have?
Motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, so ordered.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hernandez requests to be excused the April 18th and 19th and 25th and 26th. City business meets council policy.
So ordered.
Councilmember Ferraro requests to be excused from tomorrow's meeting and Friday's meeting, April 5th and 7th. Personal business, I need motion.
Mr. Zivornich moves. Ms. Misakowski seconds. Unanimous vote.
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused May 2nd. City business meets council policy.
In that case, I guess we have to let him go.
The desk is clear.
All right, do we have any adjourning motions?
No.
The closed session items were continued. Seeing no adjourning motions, the council is adjourned. Please call the roll. No, don't bother, we're just adjourned. See you all tom-
Your city, your channel.